The meeting of the Board of Education is now called to order at 6:30. The secretary will call the role of each board member to determine if a quorum is present. Please respond by saying here.
Dr. Barth Fagan.
Here.
Mr. Gardner.
Here.
Mr. Groupie.
Here.
Mr. Kimpton. Mrs. Moon.
Here.
Ms. Nichols.
Here.
Ms. Schrader is here.
Thank you. If you will now rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under recognitions and presentations, anyone from the audience who would like to address the board may do so when that agenda item is being discussed. As you approach the podium, you will need to sign in on the sheet provided at the media table. And as you approach the podium to speak, please provide your name. If you have printed correspondence you want to share with the board, please leave those items at the media table with Mr. Satinon. He will share those items with the board at the conclusion of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to three minutes into one appearance. Questions directed to the board may not always be answered immediately. All questions will be responded to by an appropriate person as soon as possible. Persons who wish to suggest items for the agenda should contact the superintendent. Sedalia School District Foundation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ben Kimpton here representing the School District Foundation. A couple announcements to share this evening. Our Major Saver card campaign wrapped. This year, we raised a total of 21,348 in sales. Schools that participated will receive half of that totaling $10,678.50. Skyline sold the most cards this year. For some insight, in 24 years, 97,974 cards have been sold totaling $571,650 in sales, which means the foundation has received $265,406.25. That's pretty impressive, I think. This fund is primarily used for mini-grants. In addition, Major Saver also gives two $500 scholarships each year to seniors in the graduating class, so that's cool. Final call for our annual golf tournament, which will be held this coming Monday, June 30th, at the Sully Country Club. As a reminder, shotgun starts at 8:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. We are full on the 2:00 p.m. slot, but have some 8:00 a.m. tee slots open. So if you're a golfer looking to have some fun in the sun, please come out and join us. Check-in begins at 7:00 a.m. and 11:00 a.m. respectively to your scheduled tee time. Lunch will be provided at 11:00 a.m. for all golfers. The cost is $125, which includes the cart, range balls, a golf ball, prizes, and of course, lunch. Lastly, our alumni committee has already started making plans for the foundation's homecoming weekend events, which will be held October 3rd and 4th. And more to come on that, we'll keep you updated. Any questions or comments for me? Yeah, that's it. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. I did have a question. Did you guys hire a administrative assistant?
We did. Yes, Katia Poychik. She is our new administrative assistant. Yeah, she's exceeded all expectations already.
Fantastic.
Yeah, we're happy to have her.
Thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Is there anyone from NEA? SEA? And that leads us to, I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Consent agenda items 4.1 to 4.18. Do I have a motion to accept those consent agenda items?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda item 4.19, payment of bills with Dr. Barth Fagan abstaining. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And consent agenda item 4.20, this was payment of bills with Mr. Kimpton abstaining, but he is not here, so I just need a motion to accept.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Decision unfinished business. Mr. Curry's not here. Are you taking that, Mr. Frayley?
Yes, I'll be taking quite a few this evening.
I kind of figured that.
We have a lot of folks.
Vacationing.
Out of town right now, so.
This is school meal pricing.
Yeah, school meal pricing for the '25-'26 school year. In your memo, you have a lengthy explanation of the paid lunch equity requirements per the federal government, USDA. This stems from our audit earlier this spring, that we are certainly undercharging our constituents, which is good for our constituents, but it seems that we would be required to raise prices. The mandatory increase is capped at 10 cents. So what this proposal is suggesting, that we move those prices up by 10 cents, as listed in your memorandum. This is keeping us up with the federal requirements that we need to make.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Frayley? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve meal prices as of July 1, 2025, as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the community eligibility provision application.
Yeah, to contradict everything I just said. Not everything. But the district would like to move forward in, again, participating in the CEP program. Our financial calculations and what that is, is we qualify as a district to receive, so all kids would receive free breakfast and free lunch, and that is pre-K through 12th. We think we will see a positive net gain in revenue of approximately $300,000, based on this past year's numbers. Plus, that would also eliminate, there's over $100,000 we've been carrying in student debt. So we would not be racking up student debt any longer. This is a four-year program. You, once you're qualified, we're just asking for permission from the board to apply with DESI. It is due this month. And if we apply, we're already pre-qualified as a district, so don't see any hang-ups there. So hopefully, this would go through. And at any point in time, if we want to pull out of that four years, like next year we decide, no, this isn't working in our favor, we can pull back out of the program. But we were, once upon a time, we were a CEP district. That was back when we were also contracting with OPA for our food service. And I think that is probably the catalyst of why it didn't work out in the district's favor at that time. It might have worked out in OPA's favor, but it didn't work out for us. So we would like to move forward with the application if the board would so approve.
Are there any questions for Dr. Frayley?
Is there any? Is there any? One of the reasons I thought we got out of that program was we got a lot of data out of it that helped us with our, basically with our accreditation and things like that. Is that going to come? Is this going to cause it?
What Mr. Gardner is asking is, there's a lot of, when you, free and reduced lunch forms are an integral part of your title funding from the federal government, based on that. And if you go back off of it, then you're trying to re-establish all the families back on through two free and reduced lunch forms and getting those submitted. That is a daunting task. But as far as losing money being on a CEP, they do a calculation, since you are technically 100%, basically free lunch. So they have an automatic calculation that figures for our title allocations based on the CEP.
So this is actually a win-win situation?
It is, unless we don't, if we move off of it, we would have to try to get all those families to reapply.
So I have a motion to approve the CEP application. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the next item is the zero hour speed and agility weights program positions.
Yeah, this was brought for discussion at our last meeting, is to approve three hourly teaching positions. Two for speed and agility training, one for weight room instruction to be performed before school here at the high school. It's kind of a zero hour, so to speak, for our student participants in athletics and other activities. Can come in, instead of doing athletic conditioning, they could come get either a double dose or fit some other course in their schedule and still be able to do their training that they need in the mornings. Additionally, multi-sport athletes do not have the opportunity or time, many times, to do after-school weights or training. So this would give those kids an extra opportunity as well.
Are there any questions for Dr. Frayley? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve the addition of three hourly teaching positions. Two for speed and agility training and one for the weight room instruction, with an estimated annual cost of $4,000 to $6,000 per position as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And that motion carries. And next is the extra duty activities director assistant change for the 2025 school year.
Yes, we had brought this up last month as well. On our books, we had an extra duty contract for assistant activities director. We would like to change that title to Speed, Agility, and Weight Training Coordinator for the district. And those responsibilities would bleed down into our elementary levels all the way up through, as far as curriculum and training guidelines for our PE staff and our coaches, et cetera.
Are there any questions for Dr. Frayley regarding this? If not, do I have a motion to approve changing the Activities Director Assistant extra duty position title to be Speed, Agility, and Weight Training Coordinator as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And junior high basketball expansion?
Yeah, Mr. Foster and Mr. Milton are also not here this evening. They had presented last month as well to expand the junior high basketball program to include 5th and 6th grade students, to allow inclusion of more students. And, you know, help develop those skills for our student athletes moving into the 7th and 8th grade and above. It would be in addition to the Sedalia Youth Basketball Association League. We just, what else questions? I'm sorry, reading through this that I didn't write, but... So we'd like to expand that 5th and 6th grade program into category nine, extra duty salary schedule. That's what I was looking for. And those positions would be filled by current 7th and 8th grade assistant coaches that are currently within the basketball program. Any questions? I'll try to answer them.
If there's no questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve the expansion of the junior high basketball program to include 5th and 6th graders as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries with one nay vote. Thank you. Playground turf alternates, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, our Board of Education discussed at our May meeting the proposed alternates to playground turf at Parkview, Skyline, and an outdoor classroom area at Smith Cotton Junior High. The alternates will provide a specialized intense knee play area at Parkview and Skyline as discussed, which provides numerous benefits for providing a safer place, space for the students that are permitted to the area. And at the junior high, the space will provide the outdoor eating classroom area, and additional concrete will be added to include a new concrete ramp from the FEMA over to the main building. The Parkview addition will add $68,125 to the previously approved project total. Skyline will add $61,300. And the Smith Cotton Junior High addition will be $135,100. I recommend tonight to the Board of Education to accept all three alternates and allow Midwest Synthetic Turf to pursue and complete this job.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And the Frontline Education Location Analytics, Mr. Pyle?
Yes, this is another one that our Board reviewed with our team at the May meeting. This is the software program that is an additional piece with Frontline. It will serve as a tool to help us consider future boundary changes that we've discussed throughout the past school year. The program will work closely with our Infinite Campanis system, provide data to help identify patterns, and we can look at different areas within our community and the different schools to look at the populations and just the different boundary scenarios that we're going to need to consider. It will help our team make the more informed decisions that we've discussed as we look towards the '26-'27 school year. So some of these planning options will take place next year. So I recommend to our Board of Education tonight to accept the Frontline Education software at the cost of $15,525 for the '25-'26 school year. This will be a year-by-year basis. We may only need it just the one school year.
Are there any questions? Go ahead, Scott, I'm sorry.
Do we get any discounts if we go for like a three-year contract?
We do not. This is a year-by-year piece on this one, Mr. Gardner. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the last item under unfinished business, Mr. Pyle, the shop storage facility at Smith Cotton High School?
Yes, our Board of Education previously approved the installation of a concrete pad, if you'll recall, near our football and soccer stadium. The discussion then, when it was approved, was for our future maintenance shop. That was the long-term goal. The shop storage facility will provide shelter and house our outdoor maintenance equipment when not in use. The district advertised for bidders interested in providing a quote for a 40-by-60 metal frame building, which would fit that pad. The metal frame building needed to include the package and installation. A bid opening was held on June 11th. The district had only one formal bid turned in from premier legacy buildings in the amount of $47,648.80. In a comparison of like structures, visiting with local contractors, and then also talking to Hollis Miller, the bid is competitive per scope. So I recommend for our Board of Education approval to award premier buildings, legacy buildings of Sedalia, Missouri, to purchase and install this 40-by-60 building as quoted at the amount of $47,648.80.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay.
Thank you.
And next is decision items. Dr. Frayley, property and liability and workers' compensation renewal?
Yes, unfortunately, insurance rates continue to climb up and up and up across basically all areas, my understanding. Certainly is personally in my own insurance. Keeps going up. I think everybody can relate to that. So the district went out to bid for coverage for a property and casualty and workers' compensation. We had basically four options to go with. We did check with MUSEC this year, which is a collaboration or cooperative of public schools. They were incredibly expensive, so they were non-factor. We will continue to go with Midwest Public Risk for our property and liability coverage at $833,800 per annum. We also went out to bid for our workers' compensation package. We've been with RAS, but this year MEM beat that bid with $289,682. So as you can see, we paid combined total for workers' comp and for our property casualty liability coverage of little over $1 million last year. And this year, we will see an increase of $121,347 combined between those coverages. So unfortunately, those costs continue to rise, as well as healthcare and other things in that industry.
Any questions for Dr. Frayley? Can you talk on your microphone? I'm sorry.
Missouri Employers Mutual is probably one of the best carriers in the private sector. Since they were authorized some 20 or 30 years ago, they've been about the best deal for most private people, so I'm pleased to see that we're going with them.
Yeah, recommendation from Gallagher. You know, they're our broker on that side of the spectrum for the district, so.
And they recommend it?
Yeah.
That's pretty good, because Gallagher, Bassett, used to be its own workers' comp carrier.
My agency represents them. We've done it since they started. They do a great job. We've got a good choice. They're based out of Missouri, right over in Columbia.
Any other comments or questions? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve retaining property liability coverage with Midwest Public Risk in the amount of $833,800, and then moving workers' compensation coverage to Missouri Employers Mutual for $289,682 for the 2025-'26 school year.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And Ms. Brownfield, the Refugee Children's School Impact Grant?
Yes, we received word for the third year for this grant, that our allocation amount would be approximately $18,200. That is a significant change from the previous year of approximately $264,000. The amount of our Ukraine refugee students has not significantly changed, just their allocation has looked different. So we are proposing to continue to do our professional development with the Be GLAD PD and helping supplement also our EL summer camp that we do. We also did get word that we will have enough carryover to support for one more year our Ukraine liaison, but then after that, unless the allocation changes, that would shift.
Is the reason for the change because the, basically it got dodged at the federal level?
I'm honestly really not sure. I get about every two weeks an update from the Office of Refugee and share that out. It's just the way the allocations have changed down from the federal to then what the state can help us with.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to approve the Refugee School Impact Grant for the 2025-'26 school year totaling $18,212 as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the surplus property?
Yes, our Board of Education had the opportunity to look in the packet at the district surplus property listed. Tonight, I'm just seeking approval for that property that was listed to be offered for sale to the highest bidder, per Board Policy 3390.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? Do I hear a motion to approve the sale of the surplus property to the highest bidder in accordance with Board Policy 3390?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And the Missouri Department of Transportation project resolution, Dr. Frayley?
Yeah, this coincides as a requirement for one of the grants that we're seeking. Part of the project to add sidewalks and crosswalks down through campus from 65 Highway. It could be significant amount of allocation. I don't know if we are accepted, how much we will receive. It is a maximum of $600,000. There is a 20% matching share for any projects identified, but we have to have this MOU in place as part of the grant process.
Are there any questions for Dr. Frayley? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the MoDOT Transportation Alternatives Program project resolution, including a written commitment for the 20% matching share?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Okay, thank you. And the Professional Development Manual, Ms. Brownfield and Ms. Gilmore?
Yes, we are seeking approval for the '25-'26 Professional Development Manual. One of the notable changes is the reimbursement rate for going from $59, which was last year, to $65, and then an adjustment for the mileage reimbursement from .655 cents to 70 cents. And these updates are from the state per diem rates, as well as the IRS mileage reimbursements as recommended.
Are there any questions for either? I will ask for a motion to approve the Sedalia School District 200 Professional Development Manual as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay.
Yeah, I'll take a moment to compliment the board on, it wasn't too awful long ago that we didn't even come close to the IRS standards or the Missouri standards for per diems. And I know that our staff appreciates, including myself, appreciates that when we have to travel for business reasons. It's much appreciated.
You're welcome. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the PCE construction change orders?
Yes, PCE continues with the renovation work at Smith Cotton Junior High Gymnasium and Sedalia Middle School. As we meet weekly, we always do a walkthrough and talk about different things as the progress is happening throughout the course of the summer. The district and construction team discussed two possible change orders at our last actual walkthrough that would improve the original scope of work. Details in the change orders were numbered 22 and 23. Number 22 was Smith Cotton Junior High removal of the coach's office shower installed to convert into a storage area for the space, which would be an improvement that's not been utilized in many, many years, the shower area. And then at the Sedalia Middle School, the middle school main gym volleyball striping, when we did the project to improve the gym there last fall, that was not included. That will allow us to have tournaments and things there at that middle school as well. The cost is $3,724.60 for the junior high piece, and to do the middle school would be $4,580. So it is my recommendation tonight to accept the change orders number 22 and 23, if the Board will approve for the junior high school gym area and the Sedalia Middle School that totals $8,305.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, do I hear a motion to approve PCE construction change order number 22 for Smith Cotton Junior High, which involves removing the girls' coach's office shower and stall to create a storage area? And change order number 23 for Sedalia Middle School for volleyball striping and the main gym totaling, both totaling $8,305 as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And all the not in favor say nay. Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Pyle, the McColister Construction Change Order for the elementary restroom projects?
Thank you. Yes, McColister Construction Company has been making great progress with our elementary restroom renovation projects at Heber Hunt, Horseman, and Washington. Thankful to be working with them and the progress that they're making. Walk-throughs again, though, at those sites have noted a few changes for Board of Education consideration as the work will continue. The details in those change orders were in the packet, and I'll run through them as well quickly. Number one is the epoxy wall application at all three schools. The original scope did not include that. That would be a very nice improvement as it would be more efficient to clean for custodial staff, provides a safer and more durable environment for our students and staff as well. This change adds $72,726.83 to the contract. Number two, change order is door installation in existing opening of Washington Elementary. And at Heber Hunt, this was a combined change order by our team at Hollis and Miller and McColister, that the restrooms have a three-ball wall mount toilet. All the other buildings offer a four-bolt toilet, and the original scope, that's what we did ask for. But after looking at it, the team discovered it would be much more costly to try to change that pattern as it involves masonry and plumbing layout changes. So the recommendation is to change the product order and continue with a three-bolt toilet, which the building is accustomed to. Number three, change order is a special education support area. We would like to change that original scope to improve this space to make it more functional. The area was formerly known as the Special Education Support Restroom at Heber Hunt. This change that we're proposing would add $5,170 to the contract. And the fourth and final at this meeting tonight is an HVAC unit at Washington that needs to be relocated to allow the restroom to function properly. If you'll recall, we're making each side of those restrooms at Washington, a boys and girls, to where now they have to travel across, so that just allows that to happen. Didn't discover that when they first drew up the scope. So my recommendation tonight is to accept the change orders number one through four for the elementary restroom projects totaling $97,147.72.
Are there any questions for Mr. Pyle? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve McColister Construction Change Orders Number One Through Four for the elementary restroom renovation project totaling $97,147.72.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And next is the Duke Manufacturing Donation, Mrs. Guarini. Hi.
We received a donation of a, it's either six or eight-foot-long sink. I think the original one was there, and it had a leak two years ago, and the leak is in the sink and could not be repaired. And a gentleman came by at Duke and said, "Is there anything we could donate?" And I happened to show him the sink, and he was like, "We have one."
Nice.
And the guys made the stand, and it's being installed as we speak this week. It's wonderful.
Great. All right. Any questions for Mrs. Guarini? Do I have a motion to approve Duke Manufacturing's donation of a stainless steel sink for the foods classroom as presented?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Thank you. And Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, I think we'll exit the stage.
Okay.
I'll present briefly, and then we'll come back up for approval of those agenda items.
Okay.
Not going to read down through those, but basically to illustrate again for the Board and the public budget philosophy of overestimating expenses and underestimating revenues. That's kind of a trick I learned from Dr. Wolf many, many years ago. So, you know, we play, it's a guessing game. We don't know moving into from one budget to the next. We do not know what our assessed valuation is going to be, nor do we know for sure what the state government is going to supply in the state formula. So we have to make assumptions. We have to gamble a little bit that they're going to do the right thing, and we look at historical averages and trends. So it's quite stressful at times because you want to maximize our resources, but at the same time, you can't overspend too far or you end up too far in the hole, just like a family budget. Goals, of course, salaries and benefits packages so we can hire the best to teach our young children, safety and security, of course. We're building renovations, future development, property acquisition for, you know, future school down the road, whether that be five years from now, whether that be 25 years from now. Proper maintenance of the facilities that we have already, activities for our students and their programs, and setting up Sodaya 200 for success, for the foreseeable future. So here's some comparisons for you to look at, 22, 23 through estimated to next year. As you'll see, the caveat the last couple of years, this past year and this year, and you'll see that in the finance memo, is that typically I'd take out those lease funding certificates that we approved. After contacting the auditors that we use for our district, they informed me that they would like to see those illustrated in these budget amendments. So I said, "Yes, ma'am, we will make sure that happens." But I don't necessarily, I take that out of those amounts, out of my calculations as far as knowing what we have coming in and going out as far as expenditures and revenues, because that's not going to be all the time, obviously. You'll see at the end of this school year, 24, 25, if you go down to the bottom, we ended up with a surplus of 4.5 million and a little bit, but we have to calculate in that we had, we reimbursed ourselves out of the 25 million for projects that we had completed prior to that funding of 4.201705. So in actuality, if we look at that, we're come out to the good of $388,810. Now, that is also provided in those calculations, and what's in your board memo is that we will receive an additional payments from the state of Missouri that we're expecting, that we should get for special ed, title funds, food service, transportation, et cetera, that still haven't come in. We do know, I did find out, I think it was just yesterday, that there will be an approximately $500,000 payment that they do not have, that we will not receive in this fiscal year that we'll receive in July. So that $103,662.756, $103,662,756, will be less by about $500,000 because that payment is not going to come in before June 30th. Have any questions? I start rattling off those big numbers, it's hard not to get tongue-tied sometimes. You'll see estimated for the following year. Again, I'm estimating a deficit where the budget, you look at it, it's a deficit spending of $14,220,876. This includes $15,019,950 in capital outlay, which is construction projects. I do not anticipate us to fully expend that. Wanted to show the Board and the public again, this is where our revenues come from. You'll see local, county, state, and federal. We received the vast majority of our funding from the local and state sources. In this year's data as well, we still received an ESSER payment in fiscal year '25. That is all gone now. There will be zero more ESSER payments moving forward. So you'll see a big drop in our anticipated federal income because since '22, '23, and et cetera, we have been receiving some ESSER payments from the American Rescue Plan. Again, the local money in this fiscal year, year-to-date, that 4.2 million reimbursement elevates that amount, so I wanted to make note of that so you didn't think, "Whoa, we got a whole lot more local money this year, and next year we're going to lose 4 million." Well, that was from the reimbursement from the lease certificates. I am want to make note of the line, the state revenues. You'll see a big jump, estimated jump. I am waiting anxiously to see if Governor Kehoe signs the budget as presented to him and passed by both Houses of Congress. Should he decide that he's going to line item the state adequacy target, which I know he's been public in stating that he believes is too high, and he would rather see our funding be flat as it is this year. So everybody's kind of on edge, and there's been not much talk coming out of the governor's office on whether or not he's going to do that or not. So if he should choose not to do that, then that revenue from the state next year, that estimation, will be almost similar to what we got this year in '24, '25 instead. So you can see, if they bump the state adequacy target by its true calculation where it should be by state statute, we should receive quite a bit more funding from state sources next year. So I've had my fingers crossed that that takes place. Just an example, our local funding, I put this up last year, I updated it this year. You'll see how the increases over a 10-year span. Where we're at, again, the commercial property in Pettis County and the Sodaya 200 has only seen an 11% increase over that 10-year span. You'll see personal property has jumped 32%. You'll see that the CPI increase over that same amount of time is 36%. So as from a local revenue standpoint, assessed valuation has not kept up with the Consumer You'll see where how we've been spending our money, capital projects, the general fund, teachers' fund. Again, we do not have a debt service because we do not have a bond. You will see the teachers' fund, that's what we pay our certified staff out of, that's what we have to by state statute. You will see how that has steadily increased handsomely, in my opinion, over the last several years. So I will tell you that moving forward after this year, unless something significant happens in the funding situation, unfortunately, I do not see that trend continuing past this Overall chart with expenditure distribution for this year, you'll see that in a normal year, the last two years, our capital projects chunk of this pie would have been much, much smaller, but it is skewing where we're spending our money because we're doing so many improvements around the district. Financial summary, this is what I presented to you guys a year ago. At this same presentation, I estimated that at the end of the year, we would have a balance operating funds, some people call that the reserve balance, of 35.75%. The prior year, we ended up with a reserve balance of 49.79. Again, remember that we've had three years of ESSER payments coming in inflating that number. So that's what the prediction was last summer. This is where we're estimating that we will end up. In reality, we should end up with a 44.77. It won't be, it'll be a little different than that when everything is said and done with all the payments come in. It'll be adjusted a little bit with that half million that's not coming until the next fiscal year in July, but we're still sitting pretty good with our fund balances. Any questions? And again, this is just revenue forecasting. Some of the things that we look at, this is what folks are predicting, so we'll kind of see. I will tell you that our Classroom Trust Fund, that money is drying up a little bit, not considerable, but a little bit. That is your gambling money, your cigarette money, your sin taxes. So people need to gamble and smoke, I guess, and that way we'll get more tax money for the schools. Good for our health, though. I have been told our assessed valuation should see modest growth. I will wait. I still do not have data from the county assessors' office. I won't get that until first week or two of July. I've got my fingers crossed that that will be a positive. Many of you have probably already received your real estate notice of increase. Federal title funding is very uncertain right now. You just approved a grant that was about $200,000 less than it was a year before. Do not know from this new administration what effects that's going to have on federal funding, but you can rest assured it will probably change. And that's it. Any questions? All right, well, we'll go back up to the stage and take action on the final budget amendment.
Belt around your waist.
Those lights. Those lights. Okay. Relax. Yeah. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Dr. Fraley already asked, are there any questions for Dr. Fraley regarding this final budget amendment? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve as presented. And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. And Dr. Fraley, the budget proposal for the 2025-26 school year?
Yes, so when we close one budget, we open another one. So presented before you and in your board packet are budget proposed revenues and expenditures for the 25-26 school year, along with resolution to approve transfers from Fund One to Fund Two and Four and shown below, those are based on estimates from this year. Two and Four and shown below, those are based on estimates from this year, because we will not have those exact numbers until next time this year. So I ask that you approve a budget that includes 102,284,191.80 in estimated expenditures. Again, that includes $15 million from the lease purchase certificate capital projects. 88,63,306.26 in estimated revenues, and that also includes that $15 million lease funding certificate program. Budget presents 14,220,885.54 in deficit spending. Capital projects and long-term debt expenditures estimate excluding the $15 million of lease purchase expenditures, they account for 15,19950 of the proposed expenditures. So the large part of the deficit that you're agreeing to pay is in capital projects for our construction and improvements.
Are there any questions on the budget proposal? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the proposed budget for the school year 2025-26 as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All not in favor say nay. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Fraley.
You're welcome.
And moving into discussion, Ms. Brownfield, there you are.
Yeah, so bringing to you actively learned, a three-year agreement for 28,000 for the junior high social studies department. When their new standards first came out in 2016, 17, they dug through the standards and said, you know, we don't really want to buy a full program. We feel like we can work through these standards and align them to open source material. In that five-year time span, they have since figured out where their needs are through the open source material and felt like this was a good supplemental product that would help those gaps moving forward.
And this is an item for discussion, so it'll be back next month for approval. Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield? Okay. And you have the next one, the Missouri history curriculum for Smithcotton High School.
So bringing to you the updated curriculum document for Missouri history. This is one of our firsts that you will see with all of our proficiency scales that our teachers have been working so diligently on, one of the first courses. So all of those scales are listed there that will be moving forward with students and along with the unit outlined with those priority standards.
Are there any questions for Ms. Brownfield? This will also be back next month for approval. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next is the SMS Tiger Tots proposal from JROTC.
Good evening. We are with the Smithcotton JROTC. I am the battalion commander, Cadet Austin Thirino.
And I am the SD, Cadet Fuji.
So what we are proposing today is a program down at the fifth grade where we would have our leaders come down and teach the kids different leadership skills. So we would, for drill, we would split them into teams, and they would march around, they would go in formation, and then we would pick the kid that is gaining the best, they would be the leader. And so that's where the fifth graders or the students would gain, and our kids would gain getting that connection with more community outreach. And we would want the drill season to last from March to October to December, and then have a competition to show what they've learned, and this would be open to the public, so their families could come and see them compete. And then for our raider side.
So our raiders would be essentially the same. The kids would be split off into teams, and they would run obstacle courses, like doing walls, carrying heavy stuff and things such as what our team does here, but in an easier version. And that season would run from March, yeah, early March to late April. And we would also have a competition at the end that would be open to the public, so yet again, parents can see what the kids have done, and open the kids to leadership opportunities to work together and complete the obstacles.
And then, of course, we would have Mr. Frye, he would do an application process with his kids, and it would require his approval for the kids to come into the program, and then we would have a three-strike policy, totally teacher-approved. So if their, Mr. Frye would approve the kids and deny the kids, and we would such like, the rules would have no office referrals, no missing assignments, above a 90% attendance for school, and then they have to be respectful, responsible, safe, and a learner. So we would approve the kids, and then it would be totally up to him for if they stay in the program. That's it, if you have any questions.
And I read in the packet that we received that this would be an after-school program, that they would stay from like three to four o'clock?
Yes, ma'am.
It would be after-school, okay. Any questions for these ladies? Great presentation.
I don't have a question, more of a comment. You know, with everything that kids have going on today, I think it is awesome that our school continues to drill down into the age groups as low as we can. And I don't know that, I don't have a lot of experience with your program, but I think it's great that we continue to support those programs for kids to get activities, and they'll find out what they're most interested in. You know, no matter if it's, you know, ROTC, if it's band, music, sports, whatever it is, but what we're trying to do, I hope the public knows and sees, recognizes, is that we continue to drill down and provide opportunities all the way down into now fifth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
And some of these other programs we've approved tonight, the same level. And so when I was a kid, you had to outsource all that stuff, you know, because they didn't have it, you know? And if we can provide that as a school within our budget and our means, I think it's great.
And also, it's the high school students that are in the JROTC program that will be, I'll use the word running this, is that, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Which I think is a great thing, when you have the older kids helping the youngers, that I think that sets a good tone as well. Again, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, is this, there's going to be no additional cost for this at all? It's no expenses or anything?
Good evening, I'm First Officer Panich. There is potential, right now, my wife actually works down at the fifth grade, and she has volunteered to be the teacher down there. They get out a little bit before we would be able to get down there, so she would take those kids and manage them until we arrive to do our training. Mr. Frye recommended maybe a potential stipend for that position, but that would be something we'd have to discuss. But right now, we know there would be no additional cost.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Thank you again. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
And moving into information, are you taking Regulation 1420?
Yes. Okay. Before you, Regulation 1420, again, item for information, regulations are developed from administrative standpoint, they are not, they're not needed to be board-approved. 1420 deals with our facility rental pricing changes. It's something we've been looking at the last couple of years because that has not been adjusted in quite some time. No one seems to remember when it was last adjusted. And with the addition of all the new facilities at the high school, we felt it was necessary to investigate that. Mr. Curry, myself, Mr. Norton, Mr. Middleton, and Mr. Foster spearheaded all of that, Mr. Curry in particular. We looked at many different things as far as looking at what other schools were doing, what other schools were charging, what the state fairgrounds charges, what the Parks and Recs charges for different things. So we came up with a schedule that is listed inside your board packet. Additional fees to include custodians, security if that's applicable, sounding-like technicians, if they're using any of our kitchens, we have to have one of our employees present. So those are definitely fees that need to be included. And they also obviously have to have a minimum coverage of $1 million in liability insurance if they're to use our areas for performances or events. This doesn't necessarily have to do with practicing, so it is event rental. So you're, we're looking at this as people are coming in wanting to use that space. They're going to maybe charge a mission, they're going to take sponsorship, so it's a profit thing for them or their organization, then we would want to charge for that.
Are there any questions for Dr. Fraley?
Yeah, we've got some organizations that have used facilities previously. Are we grandfathering them in, or this is just the new rate?
This would be the new rate.
Okay.
I don't know how to do it fairly without doing it across the board.
Difficult, for sure.
There is always the caveat in our regulations that at groups desiring to use school buildings and facilities, y'all make requests to the Office of Superintendent. The Office of Superintendent still has the power and authority to make adjustments.
Sounds good.
For individual circumstance.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Fraley? Okay, thank you. And the building quarterly reports?
Yeah, we have building quarterly reports. Those links were in your packet for the fourth quarter. I do, I only have a skeleton crew of administrators here this evening, so specific questions for some of the buildings that may or may not be here may be difficult to answer, but if you have any questions or comments, be welcome to entertain those.
No? Okay, we'll move on to the attendance reports.
Yeah, I'm gonna, the first part that you have is for the month of May to approve. That we ended up with at the end of the day in our 90-90 attendance as a 522-25, 86.64%. Obviously, that does not match the state goal of 90%, so we will not receive all of our points on our APR report this coming year because of that, but we should receive some certainly. Our administrators and teachers keep trying as hard as they can, beating their heads against the wall, trying to make sure that kids come to school regularly, but at the end of the day, it's a parental decision in most cases. You'll also see the May ADA, which is the average daily attendance for a district. We, May, we ended up pre-K through 12, 93.13%. K-12, 93.25%, very similar. That's where we ended up for the month of May. The big number is the end-of-year ADA. This is a number that we could potentially receive our state funding for. I estimated state funding this past year at 4480. Our total school district K-12, because pre-K does not count towards our formula funding, was 93.73%, 4,516.83. So that's above my estimates for this year, so that will help us receive a little bit more state funding next year.
Any questions for Dr. Fraley on any of these reports? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn to closed executive session.
Move to adjourn the regular session meeting and notices hereby, given that the Board of Education of the Siedaya School District 200, having duly voted to close its meeting as authorized by Section 610.021, RSMO subsection 1, Legal Actions, 3, Hiring, Firing, Disciplining or Promoting, 13 Personnel Records, 14 Records Which Are Protected, 18 Public Safety or Law Enforcement, and 19 Security System and Structural Plans. By law, the Missouri statutes will conduct a closed meeting immediately following adjournment of regular session meeting on June 24, 2025 at Smithcotton High School.
Do I have a second?
Sir.
And the roll call vote, please.
Dr. Barthegan?
Aye.
Mr. Gardner?
Aye.
Mr. Groupie?
Aye.
Ms. Moon?
Aye.
Ms. Nichols?
Aye.
Ms. Schrader?
Thank you, everyone. Have a great week.